... Mayor Tandu?
Yeah.
Councilmember Papado? Councilmember Farmer?
Here.
Councilmember Lozano?
Here.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Here. Next is silent prayer, followed by the flag salute, if you would please join me.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. May we have the replay statement, please?
... Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned at webcast@metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Saturday, June 10th at 9:00 a.m. and Sunday, June 11th at 1:00 p.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14.
Thank you. Next is Item B, Agenda Approvals and/or Deletions. Does the council have anything they would like to remove or pull? Seeing nothing, we'll move on to presentations. First would be certificate of appreciation for Michael Little.
It should be. Just talk and they'll...
Just sing a song or something? Okay, very good. Thank you, Mayor and Council. We wanted to take an opportunity to recognize Officer Little. During the past six weeks, over the past couple months, Mike Little put together, organized, and coordinated the Galt Police Department's first-ever Citizens Academy. It's ideas he had pre-COVID, actually. He wanted to do it. We weren't in a place to get it started. COVID hit, and so it was delayed. In his persistence, and in a moment of weakness, we got him in and we got it started. And we had 20 people sign up for the program. We ultimately graduated, I think, 12? Yeah, 12 folks graduated. And it was a good opportunity for the community to, for us to showcase to the community what we do for the community and the different projects and equipment and processes that we have in the organization. And I know that there are some folks here that attended that Citizens Academy, and I know we got some positive feedback. I know council did. And so there was some interest that we present something to Mike and recognize him for his efforts. So my long-winded speech was that. That's all I have. But I do want to read this certificate of recognition to Officer Mike Little. The City Council of the City of Galt, California wishes to present this certificate recognizing your time and dedicated service coordinating the first Galt Police Department Citizens Academy awarded this sixth day of June in 2023, and signed by the mayor and council. Awarded this sixth day of June in two thousand and twenty-three and signed by the Mayor and Council.
I don't talk as long as him. I just want to thank the community. This is why it was a big deal for me is we have a great department and to share our passion for the city and the community and to let them in on what we do. It's hard to show someone on paper our department, so to get them inside and show them the passion that everyone has and it was a great six weeks, you know. My class, I told them they're my babies. They're my first ones, so hopefully we set this up for the future. And we're gonna, we're gonna make it bigger and better and every year. So without the the community, we wouldn't be able to do any of this, so I appreciate this, but it's really about the citizens, so thank you, guys.
Mr. Lozano.
Officer Little, before you leave, I just wanted to say a couple of things. First, thank you to all the department employees who take their own time and on their own initiative doing things to better improve the department and community relations. But Officer Little, thank you for your your ability to engage the community and work as a K nine officer and take on extra projects, including this one. You know, it's really would be real easy to come to work, handle calls, and go home and but you don't, and so thank you so much for putting that together and and I I received many compliments from many different people in the community about the the program and the opportunities, so I appreciate all you do. Thanks.
Well said, sir. Anyone else?
Yeah, just thank you, Michael, for everything you do and and to the others that, you know, do this type of community outreach. You guys all know who you are and so and thank you to the citizens who participated in the program because we do appreciate you guys wanting to be involved in your government and your your police department, so thank you, Michael, and thank you to those that took the program. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike, for your service. Excellent, great service. You're always available when anybody needed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think they summed it up quite well. It is very appreciated. It's a good thing to do. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the second certificate of appreciation presented by Councilman Lozano for Joshua Green.
Good evening, and I appreciate the mayor allowing me the opportunity to present this certificate of appreciation for many reasons, and I'll get into that in a second. I want to acknowledge a couple of other people that came with Josh Green tonight. The C S D's really, really new, like a couple of weeks new. General Manager Phil. Phil Lewis and then Deputy Chief. Excuse me. Deputy Chief Dan Quiggle and Captain Robert Browers in the room from our fire department. Josh came to us from the Pacific Northwest and served as a community, consummate community service districts, park and recreation administrator administrator from two thousand and seventeen until he was appointed to the district's general manager in two thousand and nineteen. Josh's dedication to his community and endless hours of work has assisted and supported the development of the C S D's core values of providing safety and mitigating risk, financial responsibility, high-quality workforce, service to the community, and diversity, equity, and access. He worked diligently in expanding the number of firefighters and medics in the community. And just as a point of reference, we have thirty here in Galt. He worked diligently developing long-term planning documents such as the district's strategic plan, equity statement, and climate action plan. Securing state and federal funding for programs and infrastructure projects, initiating district vertical infrastructure projects, including the Fire Station Seventy-Seven and implementing popular quality-of-life programs that ensure the financial integrity of the district by diversifying revenues and increasing the budget stabilization funds. Most importantly, Josh has built lasting relationships with partners and partner agencies, businesses, and community organizations, and his sense of duty and service to his community can be witnessed by his involvement as a member of many boards and several charitable organizations such as a member of the Laguna Sunrise Rotary Club, member of the Elker of Historical Society, volunteer varsity women's basketball coach at Kusuma Oaks High School, and volunteer second-grade basketball coach at Saint Elizabeth Ann Seton. He's an appointed member of the Sacramento County Children's Coalition, executive committee member of the Golden Empire Council of the Boy Scouts of America, and many others. Thank you, Josh, for your commitment to our our community and for your friendship over the years, and we want to wish you great success in your new role as the Vice President of Government and Community Affairs at Sky River Casino.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. It's my privilege to be here tonight. I just want to say that I've been absolutely honored to be a part of serving the community of Galt with our fire department. And just how wonderful it has been to partner with City Manager Hines and your staff here at the City of Galt, who've been excellent partners in everything we do, public-facing and everything we do privately and working together collaboratively to do what's right for our citizens, and so thank you for that, and I would like to also thank you all for your leadership and your dedication and commitment to public safety and our first responders in our community. So thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, and again, thank you for your partnership and I'm not leaving the community. I'm looking forward to continuing to to stay in the community and stay active, so I'm sure I will see you all out and about. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I think it's quite nice that someone knows the community so well as going to serve in this fashion. The last certificate of appreciation is for Jorge Cruz by the P D.
I introduce you to Mr. Cruz. Councilmember Papado, who cannot be here tonight, so I'm pinch hitting for him a little bit. Wanted to make sure that council had a chance to meet Mr. Cruz. He was recently honored at the end of April by the District Attorney for his involvement in preventing further victimization of a female who was in one of our local parks on November 2nd, two thousand and twenty. And he took heroic efforts to ensure that the subject was subdued and ultimately convicted and justice was served. And with that, the District Attorney provided him a proclamation and and there was a big event in Sacramento for that, that Captain Small and the City Manager, and I believe some council members attended. I was out of town and could not be there, and I apologize for that. But on behalf of the City Council and Councilmember Papado, Councilmember Papado, who wanted to make sure that you're recognized to the community, I'll read you this proclamation or this certificate of recognition. The City Council of the City of Galt, California congratulates you on earning the Sacramento County District Attorney's Office Outstanding Citizens Award, recognizing your courageous actions in our community on November 2nd, two thousand and twenty, awarded on this day, sixth day of June, two thousand and twenty-three. And on behalf of the community, I thank you for being involved and helping us keep the community safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for having me and thank you guys for putting everything together and these are the true heroes right here. They put their lives on the line for us to keep us safe and thank you, guys.
Thank you very much, sir.
George, before you go, I'm sorry, Chief. Can we get a picture of you and the council members? All right, I'm sure Mr. Malone will be happy to facilitate that photo. And if you have any, your members of your family, I see you have a family here.
Okay, with that lovely start, we will move on to public comment. Madam Clerk.
Under Government Code Section five four nine five four point three, members of the public may address the City Council on non-agenda items. The public comments section is for the City Council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the City Council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda. Public comments may also be submitted as noted above via the options listed on the first page of the agenda. And right, we have three public comments.
Thank you.
Belinda Ellis.
Thank you. First off, I want to tell you as a City Council that you have my utmost admiration. You are my, you, I'm, I desire to be like you. Oftentimes, when people talk to you, they only talk to you to complain and you all do it, so you sit there so well. You are truly an example to me. Wanted to give you a cemetery update. It's not as great. Our grass is getting very brown and it's very dry. We have two water reels currently and we are running them all day, but we're just not getting the coverage. We are making progress with FEMA, but it is a lesson in patience. Our hours currently are still nine A M. to three P M. We have to reduce the the closing hour to three so that we can get people out of the cemetery. Currently, we are still closed on the weekends. I understand this is a major inconvenience to many who want to come out and visit. We are doing this out of caution. At this past Memorial Day during our service, someone tripped and fell and my crew was right there and helped her up, but she still hurt herself. I'm very sorry that she was hurt, but I'm grateful that my crew was right there and attentive and helped her immediately. Had this been on the weekend when no staff was present, things could have been different. We do plan on opening again on the weekends, however, I do not have a date as of yet. Sadly, we upset many people this past Memorial Day. In the in the two weeks prior, we removed all the flowers. We've done this for a number of years. We post it on our social media. We post it on the gates, but it's never really enough. This is so we can give the cemetery a really good cleaning, weed eat where we normally can't get. We upset a lot of people. That's all I can say. Every every time we do it, there are going to be those who are unhappy, and this year they're more unhappy because the hours are what they are. Next year, I will make a point to post it on our webpage as well. I think that is something I can do a better job at. On the Friday prior to Memorial Day, we had the police shut down the cemetery due to some inappropriate horrific behavior. I am very grateful to the police department for the way they responded. And I'm sad that it had to happen. But again, I upset people that that happened, but it was shut down as a matter of safety. And thank you, Chief, for having your so many people in there to ensure the safety of those who were there. Lastly, we have been cleaning out our expansion property. There's been a number of homeless people camping out there. So we've taken the major of cleaning out the trees, cutting down the bushes just so they don't have that haven that they could be at before. So that's just something we have we have done. Lastly, I would like to thank all of you who came to our Memorial Day service. Thank you, Mayor Vandenberg, for speaking. It was wonderful. I do appreciate all your support and I appreciate the support that I I receive from you all. So thank you very much, and if you have any questions about the cemetery, please don't hesitate to to let me know or give me a call.
Thank you for the report. The Memorial Day was very well done. I really appreciate all your efforts.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say apologies I couldn't make it. I was out of town, Belinda, but I appreciate you, Mayor, going and it looked like it was a great ceremony as usual, so I'm sorry I missed it.
Michael Little.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, our community members, just to clarify, I'm off the clock now, different hat. I'm up here as the P O A president for the Galt Police Officers Association. And I come with a request. We are officially in the process of creating a memorial for Officer Graywall. So just to start off, we're, we have the family involved, the department involved, the P O A. We're gonna head fundraising. We have two events coming up, but I would like the city to be involved. How I envision that would be a thirty thousand dollar one-time ARPA fund donation to the memorial. I know ARPA funds are kind of a hot topic as of late for obvious reasons. And I'm not trying to take away from any of of those because I think they they do have their place in the city. However, Officer Graywall did give his life for the city, and I think to have all three of his support groups to be equal equally involved in his memorial. The memorial would be in front of the police department. That's where the family is requesting it. It's gonna be, our estimate is over a hundred and ten thousand, right around there for for the memorial. So we are not asking for tax money or general fund money, but for ARPA money. That would help boost our fundraising efforts. Like I said, we have on August 26th, we will have an event at Back Alley, and then on November 18th, we're gonna have a full fundraising dinner at Littleton. And I'll make myself more visible as those dates come up. But as you guys work through the the rest of the ARPA money, I would really appreciate if you seriously consider that one-time donation to to the memorial in honor of Officer Graywall's sacrifice. He will never be forgotten. His impact lives with us every day. His impact lives with us every day. And I think it's only fitting to have someone with such a big heart be received just as much as he gave to everyone else. So as you guys work through those, just please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor. Mr. Mayor, may I have a very short comment on this one? First of all, Mr. Little, thank you for bringing that to the council. Because this is a public comment, I'm not going to make a very short comment. Because this absolutely request is very reasonable. And I will support the request because Herwinder Greewall lost his life while he was working in the city, while he was on this. So I will bring more thing in my time on the public. But I'd like to, I don't know, ask, turn his right way. I will ask the council to support this one at this time.
I think technically, we have to wait until council comments at the end of the meeting, but...
Yeah, I think it's a laudable desire and everything, but the appropriate is at the end, and you can do that.
We'll certainly address it then. Thank you, I appreciate the comments.
Mr. Mayor, could I, Chief, would you mind, just because we're kind of on that topic, would you mind updating the council? I know I've asked you, but the other efforts about the, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, the freeway sign dedication went to, and I'm looking at the city manager, about three weeks ago, to the area rep for our Assembly member, correct? And we sent all the background, federal background information they needed?
Yeah, personally, we're waiting for a response from the rep. They're in the middle of a deluge of bills that they have to deal with right now. And that was the last message I got from them. I'll follow up with them probably at the end of the legislative cycle here, probably at the end of July, and see where things are.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah, and we will stay on top of that. We had learned that then Assemblyman Cooper, former mayor of Elk Grove and had the district at the time, you know, there was a different dynamic in play, and he pushed that through while he was still on the assembly. So our desire is to hopefully have some resolution to that by the second anniversary, which is the same day that Mr. Little spoke about, our first fundraising event. And so that is our goal. But we were forewarned that there is a heavy legislative session with a lot of bills, and so that would slow their internal process for a resolution, which is required for public, or not public works, Caltrans, excuse me. And that's where we are, thank you.
One more comment?
Greg Davidson.
Just give it. Did you flip it up?
First off, before we get any further, I would, as a citizen of Galt, like to point out something about Officer Greewall that maybe a lot of people don't know. And the chief has told me this. Traffic issues in our town are a huge thing. It comes up almost all the time. I know that some of the council members have said that's one of the number-one issues that they get. Officer Greewall was in training to become our second traffic officer when he was tragically taken. So all of that load has fallen onto Officer Steele. So I personally would be four-square behind using some of the ARPA funds for a memorial to Officer Greewall. I think that's an outstanding use of the money that we've been given on a one-time basis. I hadn't planned on speaking on it, but I think it's a great idea. I'm very touched by it. I lived here when Officer Ton was taken from us. And it just tears apart the fabric of the town. Like I say, you know, having a second traffic officer out there would be huge for this city, but it was tragically taken from us. I think we should memorialize him, and I think that the ARPA funds are a great way to do that. Secondly, a friend of mine told me that the squeaky wheel gets the oil. I'm here as a citizen of Galt to tell you that that's true. I pointed out to Mr. Selling the need for some extra disabled parking spaces and was happily sent a picture of said parking spaces being put in. Have gone and checked them out, even parked in one. And they're great, and I think they're really going to help for the markets as soon as the weather changes in August or September. And summer gets here, I think we'll really have a great turnout for those. My main issue tonight is crosswalks on C Street. I drive the C Street corridor every day. And by my reckoning, there is not a lined, proper, yellow crosswalk from Valley Oaks School to the Save Mart and Auto Zone entrance crosswalk there. The ones in Old Town Galt are nonexistent. I mean, I don't know whose idea it was to put in the cobblestones. I did live here when that was done, and I thought it was a bad idea at the time. People don't know that those are crosswalks. And the area from the railroad tracks to, say, Lincoln Way is very heavily traveled, especially by pedestrians, especially the area there in front of Compadres. And many, many times, I've had people come out from in-between parked cars there, kids, adults, people with groceries from Compadres. And they just don't look. And there's no crosswalks. There's no yellow-lined crosswalks there. I suppose you're supposed to just know that the cobblestones are where you're supposed to cross, and that the drivers are supposed to just know that the cobblestones serve as a crosswalk. That's totally unacceptable, especially for a heavily traveled, what is, I think of as the Main Street of Galt. We need better lined, marked crosswalks, especially in the area from Fourth Street to Lincoln. That could be drawn up into the plans that are upcoming for the upgrades. That would be fantastic, as well as sidewalks all the way because I find it very dangerous in my wheelchair to have to go out into the traffic on portions of C Street when I'm not driving. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it. And Mr. Selling, thank you very much for getting those extra handicap spots.
Thank you, sir. That was the final comment? Okay, great. Next is E. Reports by City Council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did attend a couple meetings. I did attend the public safety meeting local here in City of Galt. There is, I was present, chief was there, and the safety member was there, and somebody from there, the CSD represent. And Mike Selling was there, too. We discussed quite well things. And I'm going to mention a few things, you know, that the member wants. While we well discussed with chief, discussed with Mike Selling. And we explained to the safety committee how we can take the appropriate action on that. One was their concern with weed abatement. But this year, a lot of rain, and everybody concerned. I think from the fire department, they explained to them what was, how are we going to take care of that? The second thing was, our topic was community policing, how we, the police work with the police. And I think, I believe, and the chief explained very good to the committee. And most likely, we all are satisfied. And the other thing is, everybody's concerned. Before, now, I believe, is still stop sign and crosswalk. And I believe Mike Selling was kind of in charge from the public department. And he heard that everybody concerned, and we discussed it. And he will hopefully take appropriate action, wherever complaint is, how we can solve it. But at the end of the day, as advisor, I feel we lot of discussion, but at this time, I feel nothing in this need to bring to the council at this time. And then that's why the meeting. And I will let you know, next meeting, anything bring to the council as agenda item. Thank you. The other meeting, we attend two-by-two with CSD. One thing I was happy, when that meeting, usually, we go to Elk Grove. But this time, our request, they all are here. And that meeting happened in this building. I was present, city manager, chief was there, and the represent from the CSD. And over there, we discussed a lot of things, but the main thing, we discussed same thing with the overgrown weed. And council member Lozano bring a very good question, and he asked that what we're going to do alongside the creek side. And there's overgrown weed out there, and they also hazardous material. And I believe this is kind of combined effort with city, with the CSD, and Sacramento County. And all represent, they heard that, what we can do. Homeless issue, we discuss. And the third thing, we discuss illegal fireworks in July, around the July 4th. So everybody agree, you know, there is some illegal fireworks. How we control, if we can control it. So all the represent was there. So see what kind of progress we have. And there's the two meeting I was attending. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Farmer.
I have nothing directly to report. But just want to say, though, that I'm happy to hear those topics being talked about in the safety meeting and the CSD. And I thank you, Vice Mayor, for representing those topics and being a part of that conversation. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Lozano.
Yeah, just a quick update on the SACOG board meeting that happened on May 18th. Our funding of nearly $3 million was approved. And I want to, again, I want to thank Mike Selling and his staff for working with the SACOG staff in the process to get that money brought back to us. And I say brought back because it's all tax money. And it's going to go to our C Street Improvement Project, which has been years in the making, so it's nice to have that. So appreciate your work on that, Mike. And then also, contingent of SACOG members met at Senator Nilo's office on the 17th and talked about SACOG priorities for the upcoming year, and he was very receptive, as always. Just want to add a little bit to the CSD two-by-two meeting. We also updated on our Measure Q issue in Walker Park. Asked through Congresswoman Matsui, where we're asking for about $5.1 million to upgrade Walker Park. CSD has also got, has an ask in to upgrade Fire Station 46, which is the one by Community Park on the east side of town. And so that was good to hear. Did talk about Dry Creek. But one of the most interesting ones was, the fire chief brought up the pilot project that they're working, where they're doing a telemedicine pilot project. And it's been, they've been engaged in it for about three months. And what it is, is Station 45 down in Old Town Galt and one of the firehouses up in Elk Grove are working with patients through an iPad process that when called to their home, if they don't necessarily need to go immediately to a hospital, they have the ability to get a doctor on an iPad through a teleconference. And that doctor can then prescribe medication, send them another appointment. And what it does is, or what it has done, is freed up the ambulances from being down at the hospitals and staying there for an extended amount of time. And so they're still, they've only had about 40 calls. They're looking to get to about 100 to really look at what that, the impact of that program might be. And there's certainly a lot of pros and cons to it. But the thing that kind of caught my ear was the fact that we were freeing up ambulance time that didn't necessarily need to go to the hospital immediately. And so appreciate the work that they're doing on that. And we look forward to another update down the road. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. I did not attend a meeting, but I did unfortunately receive an email for the State Consumers Groundwater Authority that we were pretty confident about receiving grants to help us with the groundwater authority. And we got skunked, unfortunately. We didn't expect a lot. There's an awful lot of money out there, but we didn't get anything. So it's going to be a struggle for us to do a reasonable job, I think. And with that, we'll move on to Item F. Information and Consent Calendar. Is there any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It is recommended that Items 1 through 7 be acted on simultaneously unless separate discussion and/or action is requested by the council. Is there any separate action or request by the City Council?
I would just like to make a comment. I don't necessarily want to pull any items, but before we vote, I'd like to make a comment on Items F3 and 4.
Go right ahead, I guess.
Okay. I'm supporting both of these items moving forward in the grant process and really hope we're successful so that we can extend the two trails. These are two trail projects. And we need that connectivity to our active recreation facilities and parks. Looks like these improvements are in line with the Regional Trails Master Plan, will help us move forward in connecting our region. I'm only commenting to point out that both staff reports refer to a park and recreation master plan that was developed in 2010 and was designed to be our guide through 2025. I would submit that there have been many events that have happened that have changed the economy and the way that community views parks and recreation. Two of these events, obviously, are the housing crisis of the early 2010s and COVID. So as I mentioned last month's meeting, I was really wanting the Parks and Rec Department to look at commissioning another Parks and Recreation Department Master Plan study through the RFP process. So I'll be asking for support from my colleagues in a future meeting. But I did want to make a comment about that as it was referenced in both of these staff reports.
Thank you. With that, I would be looking for a motion to receive file warrants for a period ending in May 24, 2023. Minutes of the regular meeting for May 16, 2023. Designation of Authorized Official to Execute, boy, I need my reading glasses, which I don't have. Recreational Trail Program Grant Documents Sequo Mitigated Negative Declaration. Designation for Authorized Official to Execute Habitat Conservation Fund Program Grant Documents Sequo Mitigated Negative Declaration. Five, Landscaping and Lighting District Resolution Initiation Ordering Preparation of Engineering Report Levy to Collect Assessments for Fiscal Year 2023-24. Six, Galt Landscaping Lighting District Engineer Report Initiation to Levy and Collect Assessments for Fiscal Year 2023-24 and Set Public Hearing. Seven, Cancellation of July 4, 2023 City Council Meeting. Do I have a motion? So moved by the mayor, do I have a second? Seconded by Councilman Lozano, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg.
Aye, motion passes for zero. Thank you, everyone. Next is Scheduled Matters of Public Hearing. Do we have any? No, no matters of public hearing. Onto Regular Calendar, H. The first item is Subjects Lease of Authorized License Plate Readers for Flock Group Incorporated. Presentation by Mr. Kalonowski. Presentation by Mr. Kalonowski.
Yes, and I'll have Officer Little come up to to field any questions we have. Only as good as my staff, so be very close, please.
He's faster than Superman.
Yes, yeah. You can change on what's that? Yes, he's changing. He's back on, back on the city dime, just for the record, okay? So council, thank you for hearing this item. In December 2021, the council approved a two-year contract for the use of the Flock camera system. Initially, Officer Little led that project and continuously lead that project where we installed 15 cameras throughout the community. They operate on a 24/7 basis and their fixed cameras placed and powered by solar power. The system alerts for known wanted or stolen vehicles along with other plates entered into the database for events such as missing persons. The system is designed to be a tool for investigation and to report crimes in the community where suspect vehicle vehicles have been identified. The intent of this new proposed agreement that's before you is to lock in our current rate of $2,500 per camera, which is what we have for our initial 15 cameras, and then add an additional 10 cameras for that same $2,500 rate. And the term on this is five years. And it will replace our current lease agreement. We've been notified by Flock that rate increase would be coming to $3,000 per camera if we maintain our current lease agreement. And so what this does is it lets us leverage basically three new cameras and then we're going to add seven additional cameras. The funding for this program comes from our stolen vehicle funds that we get from the state each year. And looking at the revenue, which is about $28,000 to $30,000 a year in this program and the expense of $318,000 over the five-year period, I have residual in that fund currently. The fifth year will require about a $51,000 support for measure R. We'll come to council for the exact number when we get there. But that looks like what our expense is year five for this program. The request for the 10 additional cameras for the full complement of 25 cameras in the community is a request by Officer Little. He can talk a little bit more about that. One thing I wanted to highlight is that this system is designed to capture plate information and vehicle descriptions. It does not take occupant images, avoiding any potential privacy issues. The information that is captured is maintained for a period of 30 days before it's automatically deleted. So I think this is a sound program. Elk Grove, many of the agencies surrounding us, Lodi and others have this program. I do tell the story about our Foster City incident where we share with them, obviously. And there was a victim of Rolex watch theft in the Costco parking lot in Foster City. And on their way to who knows where they were going, they needed to get gas in galt. And so the Flock camera system hit. We were able to stop the car and recover the Rolex watch. So there are many successes about that, but that one's interesting where it's not even a community that's near us. But people do travel throughout the state and it's important to be on that same network that most agencies are going to. So with that, that is my presentation to council. If there's any questions, Officer Little is here. He is our department expert and our coordinator on the program.
Questions for council? From Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for the note, the question, just for the information, Mr. There, we know, I think two years ago, we have that program, right? And we, I believe we all know this is a successful. Could you might be a little bit describe last two year, what main thing we we think is very successful there in maybe some incident, you know?
Besides the Foster City incident, we've recovered the more, the most stolen cars we've recovered since we switched to our REM system. We've had numerous outside agencies that have like a robbery or or some type of crime like that that have come into our city that we've able to detain the suspect until that agency can come pick them up. Internally, we have had quite a few successes with some bigger cases that I'm not really going to touch on because they're still going on. But there's leads that have come from a Flock camera that we wouldn't have been able to have. And then those have kind of snowballed into other things that we're we're working on. You know, there's, there's countless cases that I can go through. You know, kind of, kind of, a little bit of mutual aid when we had a bank robbery in town, it hit, it hit a Flock camera in Elk Grove. They helped us out. We've had numerous kind of back and forth with Elk Grove. Lodi is coming on now. Stockton's got approved for 100. So pretty much the whole 99 corridor from Elk Grove down to Stanislaus County is all going to be on a Flock system so we can communicate at all times with what's going on. So if if we have some, some big crime here, Lodi, Elk Grove, San Wicking County, so whether it be Lower Sack or out into Thornton, they have cameras now. So we can kind of start picking up and creating these leads. It's been an incredible, incredible system for us. It's helped a lot. I think Detective Sketchley and the detective unit uses it quite often for their stuff. We've had, you know, like I said, I could sit here all day and read off things in my head that I know we've had successes on, but it's been very, very beneficial. And it's for a smaller department like us, it's an incredible tool.
Thank you. And just for another very, because right now we have a 15 cameras, right? And we is looking 10 more cameras, right? And we also can make a decision, the location of the camera. This is just like a public because when any camera come to the agenda item, public have a concern.
Absolutely.
Because there is a privacy. So these 10 camera, we can find, make a good judgment call between police department and public work. And when you're going to make a decision, this can be a very sensitive issue, privacy. This camera should not be towards any personal housing or anything. I just want to make sure with the public.
Yeah, the the camera itself is situated where when it captures a picture, it is only a lane of traffic. It's not a sidewalk. It's not a crosswalk. It's all there, we're looking for is that rear license plate of the vehicle. It's not set up to to set off on pedestrian traffic. It's only vehicles. We don't capture from the front. It's only from the back. You can't see who's in the vehicle. We don't, it doesn't capture any, anything other than those seven or less digits on a license plate. We don't know anything else from there. We have to have enough more for us to use that information, that seven digits on those license plate. We have to have, you know, reasonable suspicion or probable cause to keep going. We're not looking for pedestrians. It doesn't, it's not a live stream. It is vehicle motion on a license plate.
Thank you. The, my next question to the chief, because we're going to lease that equipment. And I see in the report, the leasing is much better than if we bought our own equipment. Can you might be, tell me, because there is some other things is is on the report, they said to bought this stuff is better than the leasing.
So Flock is not, does not, that I'm aware of, offer a purchase option. It's all a lease option. There are other platforms that you can use for automated license plate readers. And we had some of those in the city where they were on some of our patrol cars. But if the patrol cars are not in motion and they're in the parking lot of the police department, they're not picking up those license, that license plate information. It's in our view, Flock is the leading vendor for this level of engagement for tracking suspect vehicles. The fact that it only stays in the system for 30 days and then purges unless we pull that out as an evidence item is, provides that benefit. There is been some dialogue from some of the civil liberties groups and others about the sharing of information outside the state. We do not share our license plate information outside the state. There's concerns about abortion issues and how that information can be used in some fashion. So that's the argument being used, but we do not share our information out of state. So we are not a part of that concern. So I think we've, we have the best business practice, sort of following Elk Grove's lead that they do the same thing. And so there's consistency in the region for us.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes.
And especially this is safety, you know, this agenda item, they're asking about the more safety to our citizen and more safety to our officer. I certainly will support that agenda item. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other council members?
Yeah, I have a few questions. First, just it probably maybe go without saying, but the, the new lease, locking in that new price, there's no, there's no downfall of that as far as like any sort of support or any sort of maintenance or anything with the contract locking that in. I mean, what I'm saying is if we lock that price in, there's not going to be a situation that where six months along the line, they offer some new thing, but because we're locked. I think of it as like cell phones, you know, you like a cell phone contract and they offer all these new perks to the people who aren't, you know, but the old people, they don't get any perks. I think of that.
Right. And I, and so Mike might want to speak to it, but I do know that they're an emerging technology and they're looking at other things to do within their technology. And so there may be opportunities for us as an organization to get in on those. But that should not jeopardize the ALPR portion of this program for that five-year term. What we're trying to do, like some of the folks that got in early at $2,000 a camera, they're just trying to maintain that rate. And it's obviously a business marketing decision on how they approach these things to extend these leases out. But they will undoubtedly have some new technology that we might want to use. And so we will add into that, but we're not going to create a situation where we're going to go to a higher lease rate for the ALPR portion. We may pay up for a new emerging technology they use. And I, I don't even know if we're at a place to discuss those, but we'll continue to monitor that.
And what is the term, and I apologize, what is the term of the, by locking in this price? What is the term here on that?
Five years.
Five years. Okay, that's right. You said that. So my other questions were, I know when we got these, I remember thinking like, you know, because at the time, and I know this, these kind of thing happen in waves, but catalytic converter thefts tend to happen in like waves. We have them for a while and then we don't and so on. But I remember, and I think I'm just stating this just for the public who maybe haven't heard about this before, but if you, if we had an incident of a catalytic converter theft and there was a, and a, you know, suspect vehicle that was identified and a plate number happened to be gotten, you guys put that in your system. If said vehicle was to enter the city of Galt through our Flock system, like pass one of those cameras and re-enter to commit crime again on something like that, we would pick it up. So that's, the cameras are used in that way, correct?
Correct. So an instance, another success story, I mean, this is one of the many in my head was we had a rash of wheel and tire thefts from Hondas and Toyotas, kind of like the newer Hondas and Toyotas. Based on witness statements and other evidence, we were able to figure out what kind of car it was. Then we used Flock, found it in Flock, got the license plate, put it in our system. That night it showed back up in town and they got introduced to our graveyard shift. And they haven't been back since. So there is those successes, you know, that case is still, there was a lot of it. It's, it's a regional case, so there's more to it. I'm not going to dive too, but that, that is exactly what, what you're saying has happened.
And my next question is, and the Vice Mayor touched on it briefly and we don't need to go into the, you know, the brass tacks about where, but clearly the initial, you know, the small number we got initially where you had to very put some real thought into like covering the perimeter of Galt, the best, the best key, you know, entry and exit points from town. I assume that we're, you're going to do that with these, but my question is, are we at a point now where you feel like you sufficiently have covered the perimeter of Galt and maybe now some of these, these additions we're getting are go into the interior of Galt? Or we still think we're still working on the perimeter?
With these 10, it will be a very good perimeter. There is going to be a couple kind of sprinkled inside of that perimeter, but I know there, I could list probably about 14 or 15 intersections where I really want them. The 10 would make a very, very, very good perimeter for us. And it would help because we do have some gaps in our plan and that's just how it is, right? We can't cover every street. But with the 10, it will, it will make it so we can not only see where the car comes in, but kind of see how it's moving about the town. Because right now we can see when they come in, but then it's kind of, we got to know where these people kind of go. And this will kind of help us into the investigation side more so to figure out where these guys are running around for like mail theft and stuff like that, where we can really kind of lock down their pattern. But to answer your question, there will be about two or three kind of in the interior of the city. The most will be on the exterior.
Okay. And then my very last question, which I just popped in my head when Chief was talking about the sharing of information outside agents, out of state agencies. With that said, that's not the same as like, if there was like an Amber Alert in like Nevada and they, there was a plate that, you know, abduction of a child or something, that information is given to us, is that something that we could then put into our Flock so that vehicle enters, if it enters our community we know? Or is that not something?
That's all through, yeah. So what Flock does is it grabs information from the stolen vehicle system, which is a nationwide database. So that license plate from, even like for stolen vehicles out of Nevada, it's going to, we actually had one from the Reno airport that hit in our city. It's a nationwide database. We're not entering it in. It's grabbing that information out. So for Amber Alert vehicles, it can be anywhere throughout the country. If they come through Galt, it'll notify us. Same thing with a wanted vehicle or not, you know, some states will throw like Officer Safety, what we call a DOJ stop, like a felony vehicle stop on a car because they made threats with a firearm in Oklahoma and they're on their way to a family members in Oregon and they happen, we can still get that information.
So the answer is yes, not just based on stolen, but the answer is yes, we can input data that from other, so there is a sharing of information, maybe backwards, I guess.
But what we're not doing is sharing the captured images of license plates to outside. So it's only pulling that information and it runs that seven digits through the stolen vehicle system. And if it's a, a, a plate that we need to introduce ourselves to, then it will let us know. But we're not openly sharing any captured license plates within the city of Galt with any out of state agencies. To be pretty clear, I don't think we have any, pretty much outside 100 miles from here that we share with. So we keep it pretty tight regionally, but we're not just sharing with, with outside states. There's no reason for us to do that.
Okay. Well, I think that's, that's pretty much all the questions I had and I thank you for clarifying that. So that's it for me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Lozano.
I have no questions. I just, most of the questions have been asked. I just worry that, not worry, but I'm just concerned that whether the 25 total is going to be enough. And it sounded like you answered that question.
I could have 100.
Yeah, so he asks and then I try to stretch it as far as I can that's reasonable for council. And so we went 10. We, you know, we could always look if there's an opportunity to do something different. What I did not want to do is overexpose the funding stream.
Sure.
In the out years. And so I was trying to be careful, not knowing what the economy looks like in the next 18 months.
I will say with this lease agreement, I, in my unofficial talks with a couple people from Flock and they're, they're, they've been raising it $500 a year. And this last 2023, 2022 to 2023 for them, they exploded. That company has absolutely just gone insane through, through the roof that they never expected that they're scrambling to even hire people to sell it. It's pretty much selling itself, but they expect that these camera systems will be almost $5,000 a month within a couple of years. So with them, with us being able to lock in at 2,500, I mean, you're saving, you're, you're getting double the amount for the same, what you would be paying. So I think it's a great opportunity for us to get in on this ground floor where we're at and continue that relationship, you know, going forward.
And, and I just wanted to, lastly, I was on a Cal Cities briefing, legislative briefing recently, and they talked about AB 1463 written by Lowenthal out of Long Beach. And it specifically addresses some of the Flock type systems. And just wanted to make sure, I'm, I'm sure you're well aware of it. It's already passed through the assembly and in the Senate. So if there's anything that we need to do to help that move along or otherwise influence that, make sure you reach out.
Yeah, we will. Cal Chiefs has monitored that. They're trying to actually use that as the vehicle to set the template on that topic, you know, statewide going forward. So it doesn't keep coming back.
That is, sir. All right. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the Vice Mayor for bringing those privacy questions into the public square. I really appreciate it. And Councilman Farmer's comments kind of piqued my interest of understanding. So I realize it's not looking for people or anything. So is it sharing information kind of on a probable, probable cause scenario? If there's a set seven-digit item, that's what triggers informing any group across its system?
So, yeah, so it's, we're not, we're not looking at registration information. We're not looking at, right? So what it does is it's, it's putting that license not looking at, right? So what it does is it's, it's putting that license plate number in through stolen vehicle system, which is a little bit more than just stolen vehicle system, but...
Right, let me, if I travel down the street, it sees the number but ignores it because there's no flag, right? So if the bad guy behind me triggers the system, then it's letting you know, and all the rest, the rest of the information is just left there to lie in case...
Yeah, and then every, 30 days from when it saw you, it automatically purchases you out. We don't, Flock, that's part of our agreement with them, is at that 30-day mark, it deletes. No ifs, ands, or buts. If it's a evident, if it's of evidentiary value, we pull it out and book it into our evidence system, dot com through Oxxon, but that if it's just, all of us just driving down the road, it, it will just get ignored. And then, frankly, like, you know, I, I drive around, I, my family lives in Plastra County, and if I were to pull up my truck, it, you know, I would be like, well, I've only was there once, you know, but I know I was there 30 times last month, but that 30 days is already gone, so it doesn't even recognize that I was there.
Right.
Oh, yeah, so the answer is it's only searching for those wanted vehicles, we're not sharing the anecdotal information outside the zone that Mike talked about, and specifically for the Civil Liberties Union and others outside the state of California for the purposes of abortion issues and other things like that that have come up.
Excellent, thank you. Is there any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Seeing, okay, that's all for council's questions, looking for a resolution, adopt a resolution approving the five-year lease of 25 automated license plate readers from Flock Group Incorporated in the amount of $318,000 using funds from vehicle theft to fund SB 139 and Measure R funding. Do I have a motion?
Excuse me, I clarify, is it 25 we're adding, or we're only adding?
25 total, yeah, 15, we're adding 10 for the number to be 25.
It's re-upping with 10 added, correct?
Yes, or a five-year term. We'll reset July 1st or whenever we get it going.
So the vice mayor moved, Councilman Lozano seconded, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye, motion passes 4-0. Thank you, gentlemen. Next is H2 from Public Works Department, levy of special taxes for Community Facilities District 2020-1 for fiscal year '23 through '24, agenda by Mr. Sellings.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. So I just want to kind of start by going back three years. Back in June of 2020, staff recommended and council approved forming the Community Facilities District 2020-1, and that was essentially a culmination of an effort to address, you saw a couple items in the consent calendar for the lighting and landscape districts, which the city has three, and, and basically what was going on was, there was a recognition of the limitations, I guess I'll say, of the lighting and landscape districts. So the CFD 2020 was formed, and essentially what it does is that we condition all new developments as they come online, that they have to annex into this district, and essentially the, the assessments on those properties in those developments are collected on the tax rolls annually, and so it's, it's required annually to pass a resolution by the city council, so that we can then take those assessments to the county for the following year. So, this falls under the Melrose Act of 1982, and as I noted, it effectively takes the place of the LLD tool that was previously used in, in years past. The amount paid per parcel or home in each new development varies by the amount of the benefit that they receive and the level of services, and those services and benefits include, it's, it's a laundry list, quite frankly, but it's noted in the staff report. The major ones, I would say, include police, fire, ambulance, ongoing operations and maintenance costs associated with roads, parks and landscaping, streetlights, storm drainage, et cetera. The assessments are adjusted annually, and this is kind of where the CFD 2020 differs from the LLDs. They are adjusted annually for inflation per the Consumer Price Index, and this year's adjustment is 6.3%. That's, that's definitely higher than normally you'd see, probably something in the 3% to 4% range, but as we all know, inflation's definitely been running a bit rampant, so. Similar to the LLDs, the annual resolution, as I touched on, by council is required to submit this for the tax rolls. Unlike the LLDs, however, it doesn't require a public hearing, and as I just touched on, it's adjusted annually for inflation, but it doesn't require a vote of the affected property owners like the LLDs do. So with that, I'll kind of end my presentation, I'm available to answer any questions the council may have.
What is the council's pleasure?
No real question per se, just that, just as we begin to levy, you know, maintenance costs on the citizens in conjunction with our new tax measures and stuff, I just want to, again, remind staff that want to make sure that people are getting their money's worth, and I appreciate the work actually that was done last couple days, Mike, on some of the weed abatement, so these are the kind of things, you know, that we hear about, and so when these kinds, when these times come where we're levying, you know, that kind of stuff, we just always want to make sure that we're, you know, giving the people what they, what they, and I know the LLDs is a whole thing, but with the CFD, we're obviously working to correct those past mechanisms that don't work, but anyways, that's all I had, was just a comment on that, so appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Lozano. My vice mayor? With that, I would look for, no, is there any public comment? No public comment, almost got me. With that, adopt a res, I would look for a motion to adopt a resolution providing for the levy of special taxes for Community Facilities District 2020-1, Public Services for fiscal year '23 through '24. Do I have a motion? Moved by the mayor, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Farmer, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye, motion passes 4-0. Next is, sorry, next is H3, authorization of purchase a mini excavator in an amount of, is the amount on the, is the amount written on this correct? Because we gave, we were given some supplementary information?
$150,073.
$73.65?
Yes.
That's correct, that's the actual purchase price.
Okay, I, I just remember reading that earlier before the meeting, so I just want to make sure I was right reading it, so, okay. Authorization to purchase a mini excavator in the amount of $150,073.65 plus additional ancillary cost in licensing fees. Again, Mr. Sellings.
So, Mr. Selling, before you start, if you would all indulge me, we were able to respond to some questions from council earlier today, and I wanted to read those out, just so to make sure they're on the record, and it perhaps provides more context for Mr. Sellings' presentation. And so first of all, in the past couple of years, Public Works has rented a mini excavator, I think, once a year. They've had a number of workarounds, you'd be using a backhoe, and the backhoe is not the most efficient workaround, but it's all we have sometimes. The excavator is a more productive option, depending on the task. So the city's applying for a permit, currently applying for a permit to work in at least six locations in Dead Man's Gulch later this summer and fall, for which the excavator would be crucial to perform this work. The excavator has the additional advantage of being, of tracked versus wheels, and it also has a bucket that has a thumb to grab debris. Additionally, the excavator will be used to clean and maintain roadside drainage dishes, ditches, and other miscellaneous efforts at the wastewater treatment plant. The excavator will provide street staff with much more efficient means of repairing slash replacing sewer and storm drains as well, particularly the deeper lines that, that the backhoe cannot reach. Back in February '22, council directed that property owners, the staff initially asked if property owners would be responsible for maintaining their sewer lateral connections. The city council at that time directed that city staff would retain this responsibility. So therefore, city staff has been averaging two to three such repairs at this time, and the infrastructure continues to age, and so we anticipate these repairs will continue, and the excavator will allow us to perform these repairs in a much more efficient manner. So we wanted to mention that. A couple of other things, our street staff projects utilizing the excavator one to two times a month. Additional use by utility staff and possibly park staff is estimated to be at least once every other month. Ancillary costs such as sales tax and shipping, which is estimated to be less than $18,000. The DMV registration for the mini excavator is estimated to be less than $100 annually. Training is necessary, however, the vendor, Bobcat of Sacramento, will be providing the training at no additional cost, and so it's included in the sale. As far as maintenance costs are concerned, staffs reviewed the routine maintenance schedule and the estimated cost, including labor, fluids, parts, et cetera, and estimate maintenance cost to be less than $3,000 annually. So, as the city has only averaged one weekly rental per year, the weekly, the weekly rate is $2,240 plus transport fees of $1,050 for a weekly total of $3,290. If the city, including streets, utilities, and parks, were to conservatively rent an excavator 15 times per year at that rate, that would be 15 times, times, 15 times 3,290, the annual rental cost would be approximately $50,000, or $49,350. At this estimated use, based on the total cost of approximately $168,000, and that includes ancillary costs as noted above, and so, Mayor, you were, you were looking at the purchase price of $1573, but there's also some ancillary costs, as we've noted here. The excavator would be effectively paid for in approximately three and a half years. So, and the excavator typically has a life of 20 years or more. So I wanted to get that information into the, sort of the public forum. We appreciate council asking these questions, clarifying questions, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Selling, and thank you, sir.
Sure. Yeah, good evening again, Mayor, and I want to recognize our Streets and Facilities Operations Manager, Mr. Oscar De La Cruz, who is here with me tonight to help answer any questions, and I think he can probably, you know, share firsthand what we would, what in all we would use this piece of equipment for. But I'll just kind of make a quick preface, I think the city manager covered a lot of what I would have probably, you know, stated in a presentation, but essentially, the, the storms that we had this past winter, and I, I think I've mentioned it in the past here, we did get an emergency permit through Fish and Wildlife to essentially clear a portion of the gulch immediately east of Highway 99, and we used the backhoe at that time as part of those efforts, and one of the things that Fish and Wildlife kind of, I won't say, you know, well, I, I'll just say that they, they, they noted that we had to do some follow-up work on, was wheel ruts, and that was from that backhoe. As you get close to the channel, as you can imagine, it's soft, and this is where an excavator would have, you know, not done so much damage, being a piece of tracked equipment. And then the other thing is, is, is I think was a little bit touched on in, in the questions and responses, is the benefits of this piece of equipment has a longer reach than a backhoe, and it does have that thumb, so it can, you know, essentially pinch and grab debris, fall on trees and the like. So, and, and, you know, from those storms, we did that section, there was an emergency situation there, but we've identified another half a dozen loca, in fact, I think it's seven now, locations that we're submitting a permit for through Fish and Wildlife to clean out portions of the gulch where there's either debris and/or vegetation that needs to be cleared, so we don't have, you know, the street flooding and, and the like that we had during the storms this past winter, or worse. So I think it's been, you know, essentially, maintenance that's been deferred for a number of years, and it's more than past time to catch up to it. So with that, I mean, that's something that we would immediately have use of this piece of equipment for, and, and was noted, you know, we've, we've worked around, we've tried to minimize trying to rent this piece of equipment as much as we can, but I think it'll definitely pay some dividends and, and gain efficiencies in our operations, you know, as we do various activities, and as was noted, the aging infrastructure, we'll be repairing more and more, you know, sewer laterals and, and mainlines and whatnot. So with that, I would just say, unless Oscar wants to add something, we are both here to answer any particular additional questions the council may have. Thank you.
If I may indulge you again, what's the funding source for this?
Yes, so the funding source for this is Fund 7, which is essentially our sewer fund.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure that's clear.
Good evening first, Mr. Mayor and Councilman. I do want to mention the ancillary cost of the $18,000 is within the $150,000 total cost.
It is, oh, I thought it...
The only thing outside of that is the, about $100 or less, that's the registration fee, the annual fee per year.
Very good. So does it require a trailer, does it come with?
We own our own trailer, we'll be able to utilize our backhoe trailer.
Excellent. Does council have any other questions?
I, I do, yeah, I do.
Mr. Farmer?
So, thank you for that, Oscar. So the only thing that's not included, so you have the 150, well, actually, you said the 115 includes the 18, so, okay. And then, and then, but you mentioned at the bottom the ancillary costs, but what's not the ancillary cost is the maintenance cost, which you said you, with the, well, the DMV you said is probably less than 100, and then the other maintenance costs, fluids, parts, et cetera, et cetera, you expect to not be more than 3,000, so let's just call it three with the DMV, I mean, it could be less. So, basically, we're looking at, over a three-year period, maintenance costs at three grand would be nine grand, so the 150 plus the nine grand, so we're like 160,000 is what we would expect to spend over three years versus the, the rental fee, if we were to rent it 15 times per year times three years, which is actually 150. So, the 3.5 years, I, I just don't know if that, but we're obviously going to recoup our, you know, there's a, there's a, there's a return, there's an ROI at some point, right? So, I mean, if the excavator's got a 20-year life, which, you know, may or may not, I, I thought that was kind of long, but even if it's four years, it sounds like it's a reasonable thing if we're going to be, if we're going to be using it, even if your numbers are off, we don't rent 15, I mean, let's say the ROI is five years, I don't know, we're still going to get, I was just concerned of life expectancy of the excavator. So my next question is, is it the type, when you're looking at buying, is it like the one that I saw being used out there on the corner of D and Fifth Street today, or is that not, is it different than that?
It's similar, our, our size that we're looking to purchase, the E88 from Bobcat, is the largest size of a mini excavator. So it'd be about three sizes larger than the one you've seen.
Okay, because that's a little, that's a little tiny.
It's a little guy, yes.
Yeah, but it's a tracked vehicle.
That is 100% correct.
Yeah, with like an enclosed cab and all that, okay. No, I mean, you know, surprised we don't already have one, I get that the backhoe, how old is the backhoe we have currently, how old is it?
I think we're in, if I remember right, we're in the late 90s, early 2000s on our, on our oldest unit. We have a newer unit that's probably around the 10-year mark.
Okay, okay. Well, I, I don't have any other questions, I mean, it, it seems pretty straightforward, it seems like a good investment for something we all could probably be using, so I don't have any problem with it, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lozano? Yep, that was next. Public comment?
Chris Brosman?
My question is, is do we put this stuff out to bid when we're going to, or are we just going through one vendor? I am a fan of leasing, or only versus leasing, to me, that makes perfect sense, but going through one manufacturer or one dealership, or do we go, okay, hey, we got 10 dealerships out there, let them all come to the plate, maybe we can turn that one.
Thank you, sir. Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes, if I can answer that question, and I appreciate the comment. First off, yes, we could have gone through Bobcat, Sourcewell, which we decided to do in the end, they gave us government pricing, which is a 30% discount on our equipment and the attachments, but we also did do our due diligence and reached out and got several quotes. Bobcat of Sacramento, beat them all, I do have all that data.
I do have all that data. I'm not sure if it was submitted, but we do have all that data to support, this is the correct purchase.
Can we, can we supplement the public data so that it's on the public record, those other bids, at least the results of those bids?
Can we summarize that into a concise document?
That's what I was hoping for.
Okay.
Have it right here.
Well, we'll just, we'll just make it a report and make it look good.
Mr. Lozano?
Yeah, just, I think everything's been asked that I had questions about, and I appreciate staff taking the time to develop the response to the many questions. But how I see it also is, and I don't think we've mentioned this enough tonight, is, you know, we're using an excavator a couple, two or three times a year on a week, let's say a weekly rental. If we have our own, many more departments have the ability to use or get work done with it. And so I think that your number of projected rental is pretty, is going to be low. I really see that maybe Parks and Rec and, and utilities and streets all sharing the same equipment and getting more work done quicker with the right equipment as opposed to using a backhoe. So thank you, and I'm, I'm ready to support this tonight.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I, I'm really to support this. Working in similar industries, I can, it's easy to see the benefit of this, and also the flexibility it gives the city, and you're not beholden to emergency situations where you have heavy rains, everybody wants the same equipment, you have yours and you're ready to go. So with that said.
Mr. Mayor, I have one, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
One last question, sir.
That's perfectly fine, that's what we're here for.
Just popped up, how many people do you expect to train to run the excavator?
Great question. Initial training, we would like to do it in-depth. I don't like large groups because a lot of the details gets lost. We're going to do five to seven, depending on the instructor, what he's comfortable with. And then we will train after that, you know, after that initial training, we'll continue on. In total, we hope to have at least four certified operators in our department, in streets, in the utilities, if they're comfortable with two. Parks, depending on supervisor, would be two to three. I think they would utilize it more than utilities.
Okay. I just, I just ask because I don't want to be a situation with some other thing, stuff that's happened in the last couple of years where we don't have enough people trained or people leave, you know, the city to work for other whatever, and we only had one guy or two guys that ran, and then we have a piece of equipment sitting there that nobody could use or something. So thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. With that, I'd look for a motion to go some distance.
Mr. Mayor, just.
Go ahead.
Just want to, just want to make the comment. Hey, Mr. De La Cruz, thank you for explanation about why you need that excavator. And I personally know what, what's the difference between excavator and backhoe. I know they can do each other's job, but it's not going to be performed that very well. And especially Mike Selling, you guys can work on that creek, certainly you need that equipment for backup. Thank you, I will support that.
Thank you, everybody. Still looking for a adopted resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase agreement for the new mini excavator in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand seventy-three dollars and sixty-five cents plus additional ancillary cost and license fees. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Farmer, seconded by the mayor. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes four zero. Thank you, sir. Next is H four, award a contract engineering design services for the South County Transit Operations and Maintenance Facilities Project. Architectural.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Basically, this, I'm going to take you through a little history because there's some history on this. So the city initiated an effort for a transit operations and maintenance facility over a decade ago, when it received a grant from the Sacramento Area Council of Governments in the, in the amount of about three point three five million dollars. After that, the city hired a consultant, they reviewed several sites, however, none was found to be sufficient. There was also some, I don't know what to say, coordination, there was interest from the school district to possibly co-locate for their school buses as well as the transit buses. And so there was some back and forth with the school district as well over, over these years. And then jumping forward to twenty twenty, in early twenty twenty, as, as I think most of you were here on the council at that time, the city purchased the existing warehouse where the transit service provider operates from. Since then, the city has completed the environmental work for the project and evaluated the existing and future needs, and reviewed some layout options utilizing the existing building with the service vendor and our partner, the county. The city issued a request for proposals a few months ago in March, and the city and county essentially, you know, put the word out to various consultants that that proposal was out on the street. However, we only did receive one proposal, and that was from GHD. That proposal was evaluated and determined acceptable, given GHD's project understanding and similar experience, as they had been the consultant that the city hired in twenty fifteen to do that preliminary work. The scope on this contract includes the final design, construction documents, that is plans, specifications, and an engineer's estimate, bid support during the bidding process for questions that might come from a potential contractor, and then design support during construction, and that's reviewing the various submittals that a contractor will provide, reviewing their approach and, and documentation, and, and also doing any clarification of the design as issues may come up during construction. We estimate that the final design will take about ten to eleven months to complete, and the, and then the project would be bid, so about this time next year, and then about one year for the actual construction to be completed. And that would be at this point in time, we'd estimate about in June of twenty twenty-five. This, this contract is funded by the Transportation Development Act funds that the city receives, and, and also the county receives, our partner. And I, Tina, is Mr. Reader on the phone by chance? From GHD?
No.
No? Okay, all right. I thought he might be able to attend tonight, but it sounds like he was unable to. But anyway, with that, I will stop my presentation and take any questions from the council at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Farmer? I saw you getting ready.
You know, I've got questions. Thank you, Mike, for the presentation. Just brief questions. It, it looks like the funding, correct me if I'm wrong, is coming from Secog and the other transit, I don't have that page up, but so us as landlords, what, what costs, if any, are we bearing on this project? Or is it like, I mean, this is not like one of my tenants coming to me and saying, hey, I want to remodel the bathroom, will you split it with me on my unit? I mean, are we splitting, is any of this coming out of, or?
No, this, this project would essentially, and the TDA funds that we have, you know, currently in the fund, would fund this design contract with GHD here, and the city gets annual allocations of those funds, as does the county and all transit providers. The three point three five million dollars, I failed to mention, we did request that through Caltrans, and then the Federal Transportation Administration, I believe, or Federal Highways Administration, I forget which, which federal agency. But that, those funds will come through them. And I did just hear Thursday, I think it was, that it's up at, at Federal High, Federal Highways, I believe, for final approval. So we should be hopefully receiving those funds in about the next month or two. And essentially, that was to fund the debt service, if you will, on purchasing the building. However, as you may recall, the city used Fund Nine, TDA funds at the time to do an interfund loan to essentially make that purchase back in twenty twenty possible. That loan was paid back in about a year ago, June of twenty-two. So all that's to say, as far as your question, sorry for the long answer, is the TDA funds between the city and county, upcoming allocations in the future couple of years, as well as that three point three five million from the Secog grant, will be funding the actual construction of the project. So I hope I answered your question there?
Yeah, so my next, my next question would be, what, what, how much do they currently, we have other tenants in that building, right?
Yes, we do.
How much do they currently consume of the building, and what will, after this project's done, what will that growth look like?
Yeah, so the building, and I'm trying, I should have looked it up as far as the square footage, I think it's about fifty thousand four hundred square feet total. With this project, the current space that store, the transit service provider that contracts with the county uses, I think is about twelve thousand square feet. The California Department of Corrections has the space immediately adjacent and to the east of stores, and that would be essentially the south half of the building. Apologize, I don't have a, an exhibit to kind of paint the picture a little clearer. But essentially, this project will utilize the south half of the building. So if you can imagine a rectangular building dividing it in half, south half will be utilized for the transit facility. And I'll, I'll point out that CDCR's lease expires at the end of this calendar year, so we would not renew that lease in order for it to be available, probably go to a month-to-month for some period of time until construction actually starts, you know, mid next year. So that's the space that we would be looking to utilize for this. And then the remaining two tenants, essentially the Blue Dog Beverage Company, and then, and I'm forgetting the name of the, the latest tenant that has the small space on that north side, which would be the northeast corner, they would remain in place. So we would still be receiving rent revenues from those two tenants.
So we're currently, so currently, the whole building is rented out, there's no empty space?
Correct, there is no empty space.
And this project would basically just consume the current CDCR space, right?
Correct, in addition to what's already being used for transit.
So the cost, the cost that we collect from CDCR that we will no longer be collecting because that lease won't be renewed?
Correct.
Would the new, would the, would the new cost that the city would make as a landlord off that would be the same, or is it going to be more money, or? Because I would assume if CDR CR was staying on, there might have been a potential that we were going to up the lease or, you know, with the cost.
Right, right. Yeah, so there would, there would be essentially an equivalent, a lease equivalent for that square footage from the transit provider, yes. So there, there would be probably some minimal net reduction in the amount of rent revenue because essentially they're providing a service that the city benefits from.
That was my question.
Yes.
And I get that.
There's a little bit of trade-off there, so it's not a full market rental rate, if you will.
Right, okay. So basically, we're, there's, there's some loss in revenue as just a basic landlord as, as the tenants, but the gain is that we're expanding the transit facility, which services galt, obviously, and, and it's hard to probably put an exact value on that numerically, right? But, yeah, right?
We've worked it out with the county on the current rate, and, and that's something that we'd probably have to dialogue with and maybe amend our agreement with the county once it's in place. So stay tuned on that, yeah, that's, that's fair.
Okay. And then this might be, so with the expansion of this, expansion of services engulfed, obviously?
So what we looked at, you know, is current and future needs, and so, yeah, there may be some expansion of services. They, they don't have all of their vehicles inside right now, they have the smaller, what they call the cutaway vehicles inside. But the two large coaches, the ones that run up and down ninety-nine to Sacramento for the commuter express, those are outside, and so those would be able to, to come inside, so there'd be, you know, some additional space for that. But the other big thing is some additional office space, and, and then the maintenance actual, full maintenance capability. And what they're looking at there is, right now, they have one, you know, small lift that they can change tires and fluids on kind of thing on the cutaways, but they would have three maintenance bays with the new design, one being for the larger coaches and two for the smaller cutaways, to where they can do all the maintenance that they would, you know, normally be able to do at a regular shop. So more than just the fluids and tires kind of thing, so.
And then my last question is just, indulge me with your opinion real quick. I see that like sometimes we get things brought to us where we have like one bid come back right on RFPs, and it's always disappointing. This one doesn't really work me up as much because like, you know, the funding is coming not from our own, you know, I'm more, you know, thrifty when it comes to our specific. But just in your opinion, I mean, it seems to be very common, we get this, I mean, why do you think that is, that we only get like single bid bidders sometimes on these?
Yeah, I mean, I can speculate, I was on the consultant side for a couple of years, and, and, you know, a lot of times, you know, consultants have their own, what they'll call like a go-no-go sheet on whether they're going to propose on a, you know, project or not. And, you know, if, and a lot of what they look at is they go, okay, is the agency, you know, satisfied with the, you know, whatever prior work has been done by whatever consulting has been, consultant has been working for them? You know, if they're not hearing any, you know, concerns or, or anything, they, that may deter them. It may be their own workloads right now, I can tell you in the, you know, in the professional engineering services realm, it is, it is a competitive place. People are, you know, shifting from one firm to another, you know, it's kind of the highest bidder wins, so to speak. So I think that that plays a part in it, too. Are they going to have the staff and, and, you know, that have the experience and that kind of thing? So there's some of that that plays into it, too. You know, there could be other reasons, too. Are they just too far away kind of thing?
So it's not like it's a niche market, like?
It's, no, but it is a bit of a niche market. I mean, as you can imagine, you know, there's not a lot of transit facilities that need designing out there, so to speak, so.
I was just curious.
Yeah, and different consultants kind of specialize in different niches, if you will, kind of thing. GHD, you know, has a, they work with a couple other consultants that kind of form a good team. They're more the engineering side, but they have an architectural firm that's, that's involved in this, too. Those would be the two prime consultants on this, so. Yeah, I mean, I can speculate, but, but I, I don't know if I gave you enough of an answer, but.
No, I always appreciate your thorough answers, Mike.
Okay.
And I think that, yeah, I was just, just curious. So thank you, thank you for answering all my questions, I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lozano, do you have anything? Vice Mayor?
Just for the clarification, Mike Selling, thank you for giving us that presentation. I think Councilmember Farmer already asked that question, but just for the clarification, you know, when we do RFP, this project or any other project, what kind of procedure we use, how we put that project, different project, go to different process or procedure, or, or all project going to the same process? Might mean is to put on the internet, how we advertise out there so these company be able to, I'm going to a lot of time, they just only one company.
Yeah, so it's, it's a, it's a bit of a hybrid approach is what we do. If we know certain consultants, you know, that, that this is kind of in their realm, they might have interest, we definitely will send, send direct, you know, contact out, emails, hey, we've got this proposal coming up or this project coming up, you know, we want to make you aware of it and, and hope you're interested to, you know, to pursue it. So we will do that, but we also, you know, put it on the website, put it out, you know, put the feelers out, and like I said, in this case, you know, we have the county extend it out to, you know, to consultants that they know and, and post it as well. So we do both. So that way, you know, it may not be somebody that we know, but if there's somebody out there, and, and I don't know exactly how it works, I know that there's essentially, it's kind of like a, I don't know if you're familiar with like the Builders Exchange, but it's a similar thing where they will sign up, you know, on certain websites kind of thing, and they'll get pinged, you know, for jobs that they may have checked a box that, you know, that's, that's the type of work that they do or the type of project kind of thing. So they, they will get notifications that way, and then they'll usually engage us. I know I can tell you, John's in the room, too, and, you know, with all the work that he and his engineering team are doing, the projects that they're putting out, you know, we're, we're getting calls and contacts on, on other ones where we're getting a lot of interest, too. So it does vary, engulfing small, you know, I mean, we're, we're, we're not as big a prize maybe to some of these consultants as, you know, as larger agencies, so there is a bit of that, too, I would say, so.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, the profit margin's a little smaller, and I think it's also fair to say that it's a blind process. No contractor knows what anybody else is bidding or if they're bidding, so it's, it's not just a money grab in that aspect. So, it's, it's, it's not just a money grab in that aspect.
Yes.
So, I don't have any additional questions. Is there any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With that, I would look to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with GHD Incorporated for the South County Transit Operations and Maintenance Facilities projects in the amount of $963,191 for architectural and engineering design consulting services with a $95,809 contingency for unanticipated costs. Do I have a motion? Moved by the mayor, I'm sorry, moved by the vice mayor, seconded by the mayor, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye, motion passes four to zero. Next, we move on to communication.
None this evening.
No communications, city clerks report?
None this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, comments by staff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any particular comments, but let's go with Director Selling.
Yeah, I'll keep going, but I'll be short. Yeah, I just wanted to give credit again, as was touched on earlier, I think, by the gentleman who spoke at Public Comment on the ADA parking spaces. That was another effort for Oscar and his crew. And, you know, I can tell you that they do a tremendous job. They're very efficient and, and jump on things, so I just wanted to recognize them for that. And then I also wanted to recognize Mr. John Griffin and his engineering staff for their work on, on all the grants, and particularly with the $3 million approximately on the two, two grant applications through Secog recently. So, we've got a fantastic team all the way around, and, and I just wanted to give credit where it's due, so thank you.
Next up, Director Craig Hoffman, any word?
Sure. On Thursday, June 8th, this Thursday, at 10 o'clock, there's a Liberty Ranch groundbreaking. And one of the questions that was asked by the development team, does somebody want to speak? Does somebody want to speak?
So, I, I was, you know, I may be mayor here, but I'm certainly not at work. And I was instructed what I will be doing that day, but the vice mayor offered to cover my speaking duties for that day. For whatever reason, I did not receive an email reply, so I'm not sure what's going on there, but.
I did reply, I think. Tina, did you see my email? I said I will be there and I will speak.
Okay.
Craig, I have a question, just real quick, just because I had some questions. I have a lot of people asking stuff about that. It isn't going to be a long answer, we can follow up after, but are they starting to do the grant? I mean, is this project full speed ahead? Or is it just kind of, in your opinion, doing some infrastructure stuff? What's happening? Because I have a lot of people that live around the area have been asking me.
Citizens of GALT, this is the real deal. After 13 years, you know, starting back in 2010 when they start the planning process and going through probably a down economy, refinancing, having to recapitalize several times, it's real. They're out there, they're starting mucking work to, to channelize any waterways, so anything to the east is captured.
I only ask because I, you know, we have other projects that have kind of, like, put the brakes on a little bit, and some are kind of, like, moving along very slowly, you know, one house, two house, three. I just, so that's why I just, and then I also have some people calling me about the noise, like, you know, it's not real early, but like, the beeping of the excavators backing up. They're like, it's so loud and all this, and I'm like, you know, so I don't know what to say. I was going to email you about that, just to ask, but.
So, this project's slightly different than other projects in that there was a global CFD that was put in place, and they're able to leverage against that money, and they're able to bond against that money. So, it's actually a capitalized project. And so, it is going to be moving forward. Groundbreaking this Thursday, they have been out there doing some levels of work. They expect the full activities to begin on June 19th. But we anticipate that their first phase, they were saying, building in about five to six weeks. First phase is 350 lots, and they're hoping to provide those lots to home builders towards March, April of 2024. And so, we'll start to see that project build. One of the questions we always get, it's 1,400 lots, it's going to build tomorrow. It's not going to build tomorrow. It's going to build over the next 10 to 15 years. Who knows? It could be more.
So, just so I can answer some people, you're saying about 350 lots available to home builders?
In the first phase.
Twenty-four.
Yeah.
Then a home builder comes in, then they start building. So, like, realistically, if somebody jumped or whatever, I mean, you could start seeing houses go vertical by what?
By May of next year, May, June.
Thank you.
And it'll be a pace that makes sense for GALT. Again, we built 93 homes last year, and I think always the question is, we're going to start building 500 homes, and we're going to be like Elk Grove. No, we're not. We're going to be like GALT. That's how we build.
I just like to give people dates, approximate stuff. I mean, those things for sure, but just, you know, they, I get, I get a lot of questions like.
But I, I understand. It's the fear of the unknown. We haven't seen a project this scale since, I mean, 1988, when the Northeast Pacific Plan was approved. So, this is a logical extension of that, and I think it's going to provide the city of GALT with a pipeline and a little bit of certainty as we move forward from a financial standpoint, and helps us with our budget.
Thank you, Craig.
You bet.
Director Matt Boring, any words for the group?
Yeah, I can just give a brief update. We, we resumed our water shut-off for water utilities last month. So, we currently have approximately 11 households that still don't have service connected. So, staff has done a lot of work, working with the customers. We've processed a lot of the, the payment plans. So, so far, everything's going good, and almost everyone has their service reconnected.
Excellent, thank you.
Right, Chief Kalanowski?
Thank you. A couple of things. First of all, it's still six or seven weeks away, but National Night Out will be on August 1st at 6:00 PM. We'll have the same three locations, Meadow View, here across the parking lot, and then up at Community Park. And so, there's more information to come out on that. Officer Little talked about some fundraising events. Again, those are August, these are going out, but people need to put those on their calendars. August 26th at Back Alley Brewing, which will be the second anniversary of Harman's passing. And then November 18th will be a large fundraising dinner at Littleton. Over the weekend, we were downtown, and we hosted our Public Safety Expo. It was well-attended. We had a dunk tank, as some of you may know. And my son asked if I was being waterboarded because I went in so often. But nonetheless, the explorers raised nearly $1,000 profit off of that endeavor. I know I had a question about a donation, so we gladly take those anytime, as they can run those through their 501(c)(3). And so, I can give you information about that if anybody has any additional questions. And we will continue to do those efforts going forward. And then lastly, I just, I know we're working on doing one right along for a council member. If there's anybody interested in writing with our staff to, you know, revisit, you know, post-COVID and all the work that we've done to bring equipment into the city and programs and different things, and want to see it through the windshield of, of the patrol car, we can just email me and we can make that happen for you. Plus, you can get some on-the-ground dialogue from my staff, which is always good. So, with that, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
All righty, thank you, chief, and well done, keeping your, your head about you while you were being dunked constantly.
Yes.
So, well done, sir.
Yes.
Director Selling, can we talk a little bit about the tour?
Okay, yeah, I was going to say, I was remiss, and, and a comment by the chief prompted me. So, last Thursday, we had a tour of the wastewater treatment plant, and the mayor and Councilmember Lozano were in attendance as well. I think we had about two dozen folks or so, and, and it was very impressive at the level of interest from, from the folks that came out for that. They were very, very interested to, to get into the details on, on the process. And, and so, our staff, I can tell you, definitely enjoyed very much having, you know, folks with that level of interest and, and showing them around and answering all their questions. So, yeah, we got some good feedback, we got some emails, and, and the people were very appreciative of that. So, I think it's something that we can definitely consider doing maybe once or twice a year, depending on, you know, the level of interest. Maybe it coincides with GALT University, I don't know, in the fall or something like that. But, yeah, no, it was, it was, it was great, great to see and be a part of, so I appreciate you coming out, so thank you.
Thank you, Director Selling. So, I just wanted to say for the public and for the council that we have really stepped up the engagement of the citizenry here in GALT with making sure that they understand as much about city operations as possible, doing what we can to sort of take that veil of what does the city do away, and more than willing to show them what we do. And between the Citizens Academy for the PD, between the tour of the wastewater treatment plant, GALT University, we'll be doing some public forums in late June and possibly into July. So, we will be reaching out to the folks out there, for those folks listening. And we invite you to sign up and, and come and learn about how your city works. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I turn it back to you.
Very good, thank you, sir. Next is comments by city council members, agenda items, Mr. Vice Mayor Sandu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you for the staff, give us a good report, clean report. Thank you, all of you, and thank you, special thank you, city manager. And I also like to thank you special, Madam Clerk, thank you for your support. Madam Clerk always give us if we need any information, right there, she give you a next hour. Thank you, Tina. I also attended the Saturday Market. The Police Department held a very great expo that was very interactive, lots of great vendors and good weather. And on my last agenda item, I'd like you, same thing on the, I'd like you, we support the request of funding for, from, it came from the POA President, Mike Leder. I strongly support that. It is a great idea and way to honor Officer Garrawal in his memory. He lost his life while he was working, as I mentioned, beginning of the shift. Even all officers put their lives online when they save our community and keep our city safe. They are our hometown heroes. I would like, because this money, this project is much more money, and they asking only $30,000. They have to make other plan to the department wishes, our wishes, or the family wishes, much more money. So, I like to ask the council if they agree to consent to give the city manager, so if he can make some kind of arrangement to this. I would like to ask.
I, I would proudly support it. Now, Mr. Farmer, Mr. Lozano?
You're asking to bring it back as a approval as an agenda item?
Good, thank you for the clarification.
And that's it, sir.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Farmer?
I, too, attended the Saturday Market, it was a good turnout. You know, it was a little warm, but, you know, we got rained out in the first two, even though the attendance was still very good, the first two, but it was nice to at least have decent weather. It was nice to see how many people came out, happy to hear how much money was raised. My softball team would probably not be proud of me with my, this is, this is why I play first base, and I don't, I don't play shortstop, so. But it was a good time, I was happy to see all those people out there, and, and look forward to seeing the next ones moving forward. Other than that, I, again, Mike, thank you for being so prompt with the, with the weed abatement. I was pleasantly surprised to see how, actually looks really good, all the way down Lincoln, so thank you. And I think that's it for me tonight.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lozano?
Yes, just real quick, I want to thank the, the chamber and, and the GALT Herald for hosting Senator Nilo on the 19th at the Coffee Shop Bakery for his time. He was pretty impressed, and the turnout was really well. It was a good time, opportunity for folks to engage him and, and continue to raise his interest in our town. And then I also wanted to mention that the Memorial Day ceremony was very, done very well, as always. It was, we did have a couple, Belinda mentioned somebody falling, but during the ceremony, we had some, someone get overheated and had signs of heart issues and things like that. But as it turns out, it was only overheating, and the fire chief, Chief Rodriguez, and Deputy Chief Dan Quigle, who was here tonight, recognized it and, and was able to get her help. So, that worked out really well. Again, Saturday Market was done very well. I didn't have an opportunity to attempt to dunk the chief, but I did, was able to dunk Lieutenant Azavita. And so, that was a lot of fun, I'm glad they raised that money, so. Again, Mike, thank you. I know I thanked you before and your staff for the tour out there. It was very obvious that they're really passionate about what they do and, and take their job very seriously. And so, that's always good to see from, from a policy perspective, so thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. I also attended the water tour, and, you know, it did not smell as bad as you might think. It was actually really nice, for the public's knowledge, it was actually really nice to see that the city uses all-natural process for the most part through, you know, just monitoring of bug science, basically, to neutralize the chemistry in our wastewater and then treat it with ultraviolet so that it can be reused for irrigation, so that, that's really nice to see. It's clean, surprisingly fast, at, I think it was 1.8 million gallons a day on the average, so that's about 650 million gallons a year. So, it was good, I really enjoyed it, and I, it was good, I had good questions, and it was an impressive tour. I'm really disappointed I got, missed the opportunity to throw baseballs at the police chief, but I was attending my grandson's second All-Star game, and just take a second to brag on him. As a young boy of five years old, only playing baseball twice, to make the All-Star team at kids at his age and up is quite impressive, and I was really glad to be there. As far as all the grants, it's always beautiful to see our tax dollars come back to us. The memorial, I always, I spoke at the Memorial Day event, and my speech aside, it was really nice to see, well-supported. Everything, the scene was as good as I could have hoped for, and I really appreciated the whole day. The, the military servicemen that spoke, I think I was really impressed with them, he did a great job. And with that, I will close the meeting at 8:03 PM. Everybody have a good evening.